Okay, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to a halt at this point. Mr. Compton has been joining us. The roll call shows that everybody's here. And Mr. Compton, we expect it shortly, but we thought we'd do a good preliminary part of meeting underway before you arrive. So, stand, Mr. Supervisor, please. Please, in pleasure, do we just say?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I stand for the prayer? Amen, Father. We thank you for a successful year here at County Public Schools. We thank you for your blessings upon us and upon those whom with whom we work. We ask for your guidance as we move forward tonight's with your name we put.
Amen.
May I make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
All right. Here's our first public comment period. If the public would like to address the board, then they do so at this time. Kill some time, please. Here, seeing that movement, we're pleased with our comment period. Do the super tennis report. We have Mr. Johns sitting here tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir. First item is to consider approval for the request for a religious exemption from compulsory attendance. This is in accordance with the Virginia Code 22.1-254B1, which authorizes the exemption by reason above our religious beliefs. Recommend an approval, and this is student case number RE-1516-07.
May I have a motion to approve the request for religious exemption? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments on this process? If all those are in favor of approving the request for religious exemption, say aye.
Aye.
Return the meeting over to Mr. Compton. It was a second. I'll go ahead and get ready, Mr. Compton, for the next thing. The demolition bid?
Yes, we had two bids come in to demo the junior high school portions that are being demoed. The high bid was $971,720. The low bid was $739,405. The recommendation is that the board approves with us moving forward with the low bidder, S.B. Cox Incorporated. That price is within the budget estimates that the architects have on this project. And so, with more approval, then the architects will go ahead and finalize contract with them so that they can mobilize and destroy.
We'll get the motion in a second so we can discuss this. May I have a motion to approve it?
I make the motion to approve the demolition bid for the high junior high school.
So a second?
Second.
Okay, time for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. What is the amount that was allocated for the demolition within with the architects?
I don't know that we have a set amount. It was just a part of the total estimate with the architects. Are you aware, Russell?
No, they didn't have a breakout of that $35 million was set aside for it. But then Doug Westmore sent a letter saying it was within the estimates that they had figured in their budgets.
Okay. But we don't know what that amount was that they figured?
No, I don't have a line item.
Okay.
We're in.
Sure. Okay.
So what happens if it goes over at the end? The whole price?
The whole price?
I mean, if that were to go over?
Well, the architects will tell us it's within their budget. I know what they budgeted $35 million is to do the entire project.
So they have to do it for that amount because that's what we agreed to, no matter what?
Well, they don't have to. I mean, they're basing it on numbers that were given to us eight months ago, probably. And right now, what we're seeing, the trend right now, is construction prices ending like this. So, it's a matter of what comes out when we bid. And we won't know until we get those bids back in from the general contractors for the entire project. Now, these we've already bid, and this, they're saying is within their allocated amount of money for the demolition. So that amount, we think we're okay. But again, we didn't get a line item breakdown of that entire, not into the detail. We got line items, but not in the detail of demolition as a separate price.
Is that standard procedure for a bid for demolition? Or you don't know because we haven't done one?
We haven't done one, but I mean, it's pretty standard. I mean, it is included in the overall price of the project. And what these numbers came back in based on the square footage and the work that's got to be done because we've got, right from the get-go, they've got 56,000 square feet of asbestos tile abatement. They've got those I-beans to put in the gymnasium. The window caulking has asbestos in it. Some of the roofing mastic has asbestos in it. And all that's got to be done before they can go in and just start tearing down. So it's not $100 a square foot just to go in with a wrecking ball and tear it down because you've got these variables that weigh into it to add to the cost. And that's not a field that I would be comfortable trying to tell you what is market standard on demolition. I don't know that. I mean, we rely on the architect to tell us demolition within what they budgeted.
But one of the things that we have done with this is to break this out of the general contractor bid so that we're just paying for the cost of this and not paying for markup for the general contractor to, you know, bid it or hire a sub and then, you know, mark it up. So, as Russell said, until we get the bid in from the general contractor, we really won't know that we're still in the lower budget. But we're okay on this piece.
From experience in hospital, that bid came in higher than we thought it was. It was a little bit less than we had hoped.
Yes, quite a bit, actually.
So it's not unfortunate. It's what happens.
It's really the same at all the facilities, even with renovations that we've done in the past. I mean, there's, there's no-
You don't know until bid day which you price. These are all based on asbestos. You can, kind of like if you went out shopping for a car, you might estimate that that car's going to cost you $30,000. And you get into the dealership and there's a shortage of vehicles or run on vehicles and all of a sudden that $30,000 vehicle looked at $35,000 and then to us in the market. But we think from what we're hearing in the market and the timing when air projects will go after bid, we think we're going to hit a window there that's going to be good. We think we've got an excellent opportunity for a general contractor because we've got parts of the building that are, even though they leak, they can still work on rainy days inside those areas that are covered. So it keeps their workforcees going during the winter months. And they got, the building pad will be completed as a part of this demolition to help expedite their work getting started on the exit.
The removal of the asbestos in those special things, they feel they can do that, those special things with the demolition with that price?
Yeah, they bid that. That's what they said they would do.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So they have to do it for that or they-
Yes, it's included in their demolition box.
That's what I was asking. Okay. There's a motion in a second.
All right, any other questions or discussion? Okay, all vote, all in favor of approval for the recommended demolition package?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is C, consider approval of contract with Vision Services with Allied Instructional Services for 2016-17. This contract is really a renewal. We've been using this company for five or six years, and it's basically just a limited contract in that we use them on an as-needed basis. But it is, you know, a great resource to have them, you know, if and when we need them. And the rates that they have in this renewal did not change from last year.
All right, for approval for the contract with Vision Services with Allied Instructional, is there a motion? Motion carries. Your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is consider approval of the 2016-17 school lunch and breakfast prices. What we are recommending is a 10 cents increase in the breakfast price and a 20 cent increase in the lunch prices for 2016-17. And also recommending that we bring back the adult meal price, which we had tried and eliminated last year, but we've had quite a few staff that want it back. And so we are recommending that that be set at $3.75. So our lunch prices for breakfast will go from $1.25 to $1.35. The lunch prices in K.A. will go from $2.30 to $2.50. And the recommendation on lunch price for grades nine to 12 are $2.40 to $2.60. The board may remember that we have pretty much for quite a few years been increasing about five or 10 cents a year. We did not increase last year. Instead, rather than increase, we covered it with additional local revenues. We currently are below the median average of lunch prices in Region One. The average is the $2.60 which we were going to, but I think they'll still be below the average because our neighbors are going up for next year. For example, this past year in Raco was at $2.65, Vigilant $2.65, Justville $2.75 for high school lunch prices. So we'll still be below those. And that in Raco was in the paper this week, going up in nickels, and then we wanted $2.70, and it's still below that. So that is the recommendation.
Any questions about the increases in lunch prices?
So $2.75. Yes, sir. And they actually changed the language of how we, you know, do that. I mean, I was surprised when we ran through the formulas that we needed to go up 20 cents. We're still, obviously, at $2.60 going to be below that, $2.78. But it was what it is.
Mr. Johnson, did we see any statistically significant variation in the number of students who buy the lunches as the prices go up? Or does it stay fairly constant?
I've not been able to project a standard deviation, but we do, as prices go up, have been experiencing, experiencing decline in sales. Now, I know a part of that over the last three or four years has been the weight of meals prepared and federal guidelines and regulations, the benefits you have, the taste of the food, and those type things. And we, even this year with more students, have still experienced a decline in sales. And I hate to see that. We've got to do something to get the sales to start going back up with the increase in students. But that doesn't happen in absolute cases, so.
I was saying, based on my experience with Silverstone, I've been talking about Ms. Hill, she attributes the decline majorly to nutrition, diet, changes the way they prepare their food, changes the way they give them, and also it changes the amount of the hospital supply.
It's something ridiculous, yeah.
What did the schools do, the adults do, we didn't have in another place? Did they just get a student?
Auto card. Auto card. They'll pay auto card. Which they can still do, but some staff want to just pay the separate price for the meal. So we'll still have auto card.
What's the actual price of the meal? Not the price we charge, what's actually the price?
You know, I don't know. Because it's really more than what we are charging. And because when you take our staff time and deal calls and, you know, all those things into consideration, and the fact that the school board has to subsidize school food service because our freedom reduced percentage is like 17 percent. And school system, school food service operations that are that low, I mean, you've got to get up to about 30 percent to start breaking even and making money. And so, it'll be a long time before we can stop subsidizing. So I would say, based on that, our cost is more than what the students are paying.
Again, I absolutely agree. I was just curious what the actual cost of the system is.
I mean, I could tell you that because I'm not a calculator, because I have the number of meals served, I just don't know it.
I guess the thought that occurs to me is what actually several people have said, that parents come, there are meetings and complain about things that really we can't do much to address, but they're very legitimate concerns that their children are complaining about the type of food they're eating, quantity of food. You know, we've had a couple of parents come and very seriously tell us that their children are not fueled in the meal as they. And it's just, that's a issue. You know, they're going to come up with other options if that's the case.
I know how much I, when I was, again, I've got an 11-year-old son, I know how much he needs.
Student athletes and people in band that go to, you know, march for hours after school. I mean, it's ridiculous, a $400-pounder meal that's the last breakfast to dinner.
I bought him two pounds at a time.
Yeah, I've got three sons, and I know exactly what you're talking about. I guess the thought that comes to my mind, too, is that there are, unfortunately, there are lots of children who lose the meal that they receive at school is probably the best meal they're going to have during the course of the day, and sometimes it's the only meal they're going to have. And it's just a shame that we're having this kind of conversation nowadays, I suppose.
Mr. Johns, what about last year, you talked to us about the taste, about adding the spices and that doing the workshops that the food service was going to try. Did they do that or?
Well, they did that some, but, you know, for example, some of the PTA meetings and so forth, and there wasn't a whole lot of turnout, you know, on that. But we are still looking at ways to try and get more sales. But it's just, the limitations that you have with the federal regulations, so.
You could tease about the PTA. I thought that food service was going to give the, at each school, what do you call it, the director or the?
The manager, cafeteria manager.
The manager, yes, the cafeteria manager. They were going to hire people to help them with the taste.
Oh, a dietitian. We had not hired a dietitian. We have gone and visited some neighboring school systems and tried to alter our recipes within federal guidelines. But hiring a dietitian was one of the things that we were looking to do this past year, but we have not done that.
Well, maybe if, that's one thing we can control is the taste, but we can't control the portions. We could look into that.
If the flavor enhancing falls, I have a feeling that there's going to be limitations on what can be done.
You've got to say it. I mean, they would have to write.
You have to look at other spices rather than salt.
Right. Yes, most definitely.
Well, and when kids come from homes that use salt, as in a lot of southern homes do, that food doesn't taste good. I mean, I'm sorry, if you are used to eating salt on your egg and you don't have salt on your egg, I don't eat an egg without salt on it. So, as you say, kids are no different. I mean, they have the taste that comes from their food.
But there's also other spices, you know, basil and, you know, I mean, there's pepper. There's all kinds of other spices that you could use other than salt because salt is not good. I get that. Sea salt, yes, that's a good one, yeah.
Any other discussion on the prices? I make a motion for the prices. All right, your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Next item is the year-end adjustments for the budget. There are basically three recommendations that we're asking the board to approve tonight. The first one is to increase the total budget by $20,000. Last year, when the board supervisors were appropriating the budget, they had given us one number of 21, transferred 21,469,902. But then when they put their budget together, they actually appropriated 21,489,902. And that was Resolution R. 215-38 that was that $20,000 difference. So, first recommendation is to increase the total budget by $20,000 from 44,203,072 to 44,223,072. The second recommendation is to approve the proposed amendments to the budget categories as presented on this attachment to your agenda item. And just to give the board a little bit of information as to what the adjustments are for the categories, there's savings in the instruction category, and so we want to move some dollars from instruction to the other categories. Some of the reasons that we have some savings in instruction is that we had some turnover, but our leave payouts at the end of this fiscal year have been significantly less than what they had been in prior years. I mean, last year, we spent over $200,000 in leave payouts for retirements and so forth. And this year, it's not even a fourth of that. So that's, you know, been one thing. In technology, more dollars are being spent there. We have purchased quite a few overhead projectors for the schools that are being installed, as well as car parks, and so we need to move some dollars in there. In the transportation category, we have purchased some special education, additional special education vans, as we have intended to do. Purchased a driver's ed car focused for that program, and two maintenance vans, as well as 100 GPS units for our buses and cars. So this summer, all of our buses for summer school will have GPS units on active GPS. And by next year, we will have almost the entire fleet with active GPS units on there.
So that, is that a lease purchase dollar amount?
No, that's a, that is a purchase.
The actual, the vans and the cars, too?
Oh, yes, they're all purchased, direct purchased, that includes. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And of course, there's, in the capital, the 201,429 is being moved to operation and maintenance. And operation and maintenance has done quite a few things. Number one, about $50,000 was spent just a couple of days before the high school graduation for a compressor that went out there, so it would be cool. Glad they were able to get that done quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Charles' money.
There were also, I mean, there are parking lot repaving and sealing at the high school, Pope Conus Elementary, Pope Conus Middle, trailers being moved in conjunction with this new, the new project, the high school, junior high, and those type things. So there's quite a few projects, I mean, it isn't a long list, but quite a few projects that O and M. A lot of those things that O and M has been doing were also in the capital reserve study that was done a couple of years ago. And you remember, you know, last year, year and a half ago, when this board was working with the supervisors and trying to reduce the total capital fund, the board had made a commitment that some of those things would be done. For example, parking lot payment, tennis courts at the high school, those type things, those were all maintenance items in the capital reserve fund. And we're addressing, you know, some of those now with this. The last recommendation is that the school board increase the transfer of the school food service department by $60,000. So we go from 142,559 to 202,559. We ended last year with about $169,000 balance in the food service account. I project that we're going to end this year with about a $65,000 balance. We really should have at least three months' reserve for food costs as a minimum. And so, that 60 will take us to about 125, which I feel comfortable with. And so, those are the three recommendations, and they're all listed on the bottom of this chart. So, do you have any questions that the board members may have about? Oh, and one last thing I do want to let you know. Our revenues this year are much greater than what we had projected. I mean, the increase in ADM above 100 students, that's over $400,000. So even with these changes and the things that we're doing, I'm projecting that our year-end balance that's going to go into the capital reserve fund for school accounts is going to be around, somewhere between $550,000 and $600,000, which is going to be nice because you're going to be adding that to the $280,000 that we had put in there last year. So, I know you all have concerns about what's going to happen when we did these projects, and at least those dollars will be sitting there that if we did have a problem, or could we go back to the board supervisors and ask that that, that $750,000, some of that be used for the projects. So I'm glad we're able, I'm really glad that the two boards set up that capital reserve fund and that we have the ability to, you know, feed these dollars into that and set them aside for the future, so.
So $160,000, $150,000, $550,000, so that's going to, that would be unspent dollars out of this $45,558,000?
Yes, sir. What happens is that, for example, you look at the local county transfer, 21,49, that is going to be 20,890, 21, 20,800,000 dollars. And so, yes, it would be, it would be unspent. And if it does, this is the kind of transfer.
Any other questions about the transfers?
Hi, Mr. Johns, how much reserve did you say that you wanted us to have in the food service?
Well, 125 is about the lowest that I would like to go. And the reason is because when you look at your food cost of anywhere from 40,000 to 50,000 dollars a month, then that's just a little over two months' supply. And so, I'd like for it to be more than that, but I'm comfortable with this amount at this time.
So that you said that's about two to three months?
For food costs. And federal guidelines for you not to go over three months, and want you to stay under, you know, near three months is the federal guideline on food service.
At least three, you don't go over three.
They don't say anything if you do, but that's, it's a guideline. It's a market basketball.
Thank you.
Do we need two motions or possibly three motions?
Right.
Three, okay. The food service has to have its own budget, budget, okay, right down there. One second. Whoever makes these motions are, they're, they're working at the bottom here. Any other questions or discussion? So I understand we'll have, we have increased ADM and then the other part of the year balance is the savings.
I thought this was the savings, and what you're going to?
Now, this is, uh, this is just budget amendments, but we still, you know, after this is done,
Yes.
we will be, instead of spending forty-four million two twenty-three in total, we're going to be spending forty-three million, um, seven hundred or something.
Correct.
So our, our, our motions are going to be for the twenty thousand dollar increase to the operating budget. Another motion approving the changes, moving the money between the different categories as we've outlined here. And the last motion would be the increase to the transfer of the food services sixty thousand.
You know, there's two questions before you make the motion. Firstly, is, and I, and I think I understand what you're talking about with the county. The county is maintaining on their side of the books that, that reserve fund for us, is that right? That's not maintained on our side of the, of the accounts, it's on theirs?
Correct.
And there, those funds are, are as much as they can be restricted for dedicated purpose. They're for our use, right? There's, there's no potential that they could be used for some other purposes?
Well, the-
There's always potential, but it's not like-
The county financial report has those designated as a school capital reserve fund. And it was in their audit, uh, report that was issued last year. Now, would the supervisors say at one point in time do something with them? I don't know, but the commitment is there, it's in writing.
And, and what was the agreement that, as I recall, there were designated things that they, that that bunch of funds could be used for? Can you tell me again what they are?
Yes, sir. The, uh, the guidance at that time that the capital reserve fund was established was that these dollars would be used for bricks and mortar type of, uh, expenses rather than us being able to go and buy the school buses or, you know, do a major L and M repair or, uh, textbooks or vehicles or, uh, anything else. Uh, now, the caveat has always been that because those dollars are in a capital reserve fund maintained by the county, at a point in time when this board decides that we want to use those dollars for a specific project, we're going to have to go to the board supervisors where they request the resolution asking that they appropriate those dollars to a capital whatever. Now, the bricks and mortar definition, the supervisors can change that at, at any time. They can decide at any time if the-
So, so the mechanism that permits us to actually access these funds and use them for school purposes is to put a reservation back in front of the board supervisor where they allocate appropriate of those funds for our use?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Ready for it? Uh, I'm ready, board is ready. Make a motion that school board amend the operating budget for two thousand fifteen, sixteen by increasing twenty thousand dollars from forty-four million two hundred and thirty thousand seventy-two dollars to forty-four million two hundred and twenty-three thousand seventy-two dollars. Page second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Motion, one carries. Motion two is, uh, recommend, make a motion that the school board agree to propose amendments to the categories that were presented tonight on the document. Page there, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And I make a motion to school board increase the transfer of food services by sixty thousand dollars, moving that from one hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars to two hundred and two thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Page there, second?
Okay.
Motion, uh, excuse me, uh, call the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the, uh, next item is to consider approval for a, um, two thousand sixteen, seventeen Title III statewide consortium, uh, application. This is, uh, not a whole lot of money. It's, uh, more work than it is money. I think there's about sixteen hundred, something less than seventeen, uh-
Sixteen, seventy-one.
Right, yeah, right. But we still have to go through the process of, uh, getting that through and seeing if we're able to get this.
Any questions about the, uh, Title III consortium application? All right, is there a motion?
Second?
Page there, second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Um, and then we have a overnight field trip, um, for the cheerleaders to attend cheer camp at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill on August fifth through the seventh.
That's a beautiful place to do cheer camp.
Yeah.
It's getting geographical, isn't it? Support of any team, right?
Well, I make motion we accept the, uh, overnight field trip for the cheerleaders to attend cheer camp.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to some closed session items. Mr. Cole, would you read the, uh, motion for closed session? Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation we should close session for section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve A warrants discussing the designation of these specific categories. There is two point two, you can ask that same one. Page there, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to close session officially until two minutes. All right, I have a motion to come out of closed, closed session.
Second?
Page there, second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Walters, we read certification.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Palatine County School Board has convened a closed meeting with the state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and according to provisions of Virginia Fugitive Motion Act, and whereas section two point two thirty-seven twelve D of Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore being resolved that the Palatine County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. This brings us to our personnel docket, and, uh, Joe, do you have a motion about the personnel?
I, I do. I make a motion that we approve the personnel docket as amended.
Page there, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Items for discussion, we have, uh, next steps and follow-up.
Next steps, I passed out, uh, each of you have at this point a copy of, uh, five, uh, gen five items that were discussed at various times during our meetings over the past, was this January first, when I was elected. Um, these are simply from my notes, and these are intended for discussion at our compensation workshop that we have agreed to have a little later this year, sometime in August, September, that period of time. I'll just briefly, I'll be glad to touch on a couple of these. The first topic was broadly compensation. Uh, we had speakers at various times talk about the compensation study that was done before the end of the year. Uh, we, we have discussed how have other counties, how has their compensation changed? Uh, what direction do we want to take as we move forward? And one of the things that we've talked about as a board is establishing something like a compensation philosophy. Dr. Jones expressed a desire to have that from us. Uh, and one of the other items that a speaker at one point mentioned were something like merit-based increases or performance bonuses, and I include that. Uh, stipends or bonuses were also talked at various times. And one of the questions we talked about, were there hard-to-fill positions? And if so, perhaps should we look at some sort of bonus associated with that? Um, I think that's an item that we should discuss and need to discuss, and that's probably a recruitment or retention tool for the central office here. Uh, also the stipends for coaching and extracurricular activities were talked about at various times. Uh, there is a formula that we use to do that, but we have, we have expressed a desire in meetings to talk about looking at how that is being done. Uh, the third item was insurance premiums. We spent quite a bit of time talking about insurance premiums. Uh, some of the questions that I have recorded from various speakers and in discussion, uh, one was are we in alignment with the county? I think we had a desire to make sure that we were there. Uh, if not, what are the variances? Uh, it was discussed at great length whether we should continue to have a different types of insurance. Uh, one of them is two sets of premium charts, one for employees hired before a particular date, one for employees hired after a particular date. Uh, we also spent quite a bit of time talking about the dual employee plan, which is something that I think we agreed that we, we wanted to bring some certainty to. One of the desires was not to force our employees to come in here on an annual basis and talk to us about whether these plans would continue or not to continue. I think some certainty is important. Uh, the fourth item I had is a total benefit statement. Uh, at one time we talked about, do, do we, do we have one of these? If not, maybe we should. And a total benefit statement is something that's sometimes given to employees that lays out to them what the actual, their actual compensation is. And that includes things like the employer contribution, the health insurance, uh, premium, which is a significant amount of money that we pay that really they don't see because the county pays it or the schools pay it on their behalf. The final general broad topic I had was a leave, leave policies and leave issues. We spent some time on an occasion or two talking about sick leave policy, something like a leave bank or leave share options. Uh, there was some interest expressed in that, so I thought that that was an item as well. And then the final thing I had, and this is, is my recollection, somebody asked me about this, was recognition leave, and I included that as well. And that's an item that is some, some employers, uh, it is hard to do bonuses sometimes. Sometimes employers will give leave for recognition of extraordinary performance or other things, and I included that as well. Um, what I would say is that I, I simply made an effort to try to record the things that were discussed and comments that were made at various meetings. You know, I, I think we need to talk about all of these items, but I don't particularly at this point advocate any of them beyond simply, uh, excuse me, beyond simply a desire to put them on the table. And I think we have committed on a couple of occasions to have a meeting where we talked about things like this, and I just wanted to make sure that the things that people have talked about that we recorded, that we included. So that's what you have in front of you. And again, I have a particular private ownership on what's on there. I did the best I could from the notes that I recorded.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you.
I don't have anything at this time.
Ms. Emo, next steps you call it?
Um, I had a couple inquiries about the summer camp, um, the signing in and signing out, specifically, um, the basketball camp, if, um, parents are doing that or not. And could you look into that for me, please, and let me know that? And then I'd like to, um, do something out of the box with the, uh, food, the dietitian, or follow up on what your ideas were last year, Mr. Johnson? And, uh, our other idea here, we heard from, um, Ms. McFarlane, something out of the box that we could do.
Mr. Cole? Um, I'm just, I'm guessing that you have some paper. Kind of wraps or something of ongoing pictures of the cost of the renovation as it goes along. Your question about some, uh, so that'd be my only thing to hope to make do. And I'm sure that someone's already thought about that and it's going to happen. That's all I have, hopefully, but I guess, would you want? Um, I have a calendar in front of the board, and as you can see, July is pretty much all read it out. Can we pick a tentative date out of what's left of August or push it into September for a board retreat? And this is, I think collectively in an agreement, we'll do something local and cheap, um, at maybe Coger Center or some, uh, local place we can, uh, get together and hash out a lot of the, a lot of the directions that, um, Mr. Walters laid out, and others that the board members want to put forward, uh, for our agenda. Anybody seen any dates that would work for them?
About your August third date, it's middle of the week, and it appears to be not read.
Anything not read should, should work for us.
Will this be it all day?
I think the board retreats are, it's going to be during the work today. Yeah, it's going to be hard for me to commit to Florida today.
When will you be out of town?
Obviously, the work could be around then. We got a opening on the fifteenth.
Dr. Jones will be out of town.
And that puts us to the eighteenth.
I've got that, you won't go that far.
Twenty-ninth. So we can see what's in front of Dr. Jones. I hope for a week. Does that push us into September?
September.
I don't have any blackout dates on my calendar that far ahead. Anything we pick?
But you will.
Maybe we substitute.
So if you, I mean, why, if you, we need to wait until you get your schedule because why plan something and then have to do what we did before and cancel it?
For, for that far out, I guess, yeah, no problem with, we can try and address it a little bit later.
And so, you're, this is during the day, not the evening? Is that correct?
It only lasts all day.
All day, okay, eight, eight to four.
Okay, well, I normally going to be able to do like ten to two, or depending on how far away it is. If it's close by, then of course-
It would be, it would be local, it wouldn't even be Charlottesville.
Oh, okay, well, then I can-
We could do it at Coger Center.
Probably nine, then bus comes, well, it's coming earlier, so maybe sooner, let's see what the schedule is.
Would there be any desire to do this on Saturday?
I mean, I'm just saying, it really, no.
That was sports, that'd be a vacation, I'm sorry, yeah.
Tell me about desire or willingness. Willing, if we gotta, we gotta.
So you were completely unavailable in kind of July, is that the red block?
No, no, only two, only two weeks of July are mine.
It's the last week of July.
A lot of us are involved.
Yeah, you had a lot, you had a lot in there, just-
I'm available next week.
I'm most likely out of town. It's on red, anyone? Red, red was red, red was a conflict from somebody.
Yeah, some of mine, I can, I can try to move around if we, if we have an alternative. And I mean, I can throw out some of these dates because I'm certain some of the red is from my response.
Okay. Well, if you, if you have any that you can put back into the mix, uh, just shoot me an email and-
Could you do it now?
Yeah, that's what I, can we just, can we just do it? How about the twenty-first?
July?
Let me see if that's, my two, my two conflicts were week-long conflicts due to, uh, travel. And let me just pull those up real quick so that I can tell what weeks those are. The twenty-one?
Twenty-first. It's a Thursday.
A Tuesday, Tuesday. My blackout weeks were the week of the tenth and the week of the twenty-fourth. So, I have no conflicts the week of the seventeenth.
And mine are the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so nineteen through twenty-second are tentatively okay for me.
No, I'm, I'm saying the week of the eighteenth, twenty-fifth, yes, uh-huh.
You're, you're, you're no good either one of us, okay.
Right, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Week of the seventeenth and the week of the twenty-
We're back, we're back to-
We're back.
And August, basically.
Virtually all of August. How about August second? Is that your date or mine? That's a tease, though.
I'm still teaching.
I'm on vacation.
We might have to look at a couple of evenings, and I would like it all at one time. But we might say, okay, let's do the five o'clock to eight o'clock a couple of times, you know, and that would be the only thing on their agenda, that we just covered two different pieces in the beginning, not having that. Yep, that's, that's-
That's true.
That's how you do dinner and just-
That's true.
And do that.
That could be. And plus, if we have different, I'm sorry, Ms. Emo, um, if we have different people coming to speak to the board on different topics, that might work. We could do a group one night and a group the next night.
No, how about, how about, well, isn't that what we were going to do at the meetings in August?
Yeah, but I think these are two different, we're talking about the board retreat versus the public meetings.
Right.
They're both public, but the meetings where we focus on compensation, I think they were two different.
I, I see no problem with having the board retreat divided into two evening sessions.
I have no objection.
Well, why not do it, I, I penciled in my calendar the dates from the beginning of the year, so I have already- so I already am open on the 2nd and the 4th. Wait, some of, were we not going to have the meetings in August? They're red dates, so that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, the 9th and 23rd we have meetings.
Right, but they're red dates, so that's why I, that means, so that's the daytime?
Those were the daytime conflicts that were given to me.
Oh, daytime, okay.
Yeah, because we're all daytime conflicts. So, if the evening of the 2nd and the evening of the 4th are agreeable to everybody, that's, that's-
We're going the week of the 4th, that whole week.
Same here.
So, if that meeting, that's, we, meeting log is not done on this, anyway, we'll be out of town.
The 2nd and the 4th also?
You're talking about 2nd and 4th of August. You're talking about dates and 2nd and 4th, Tuesday, which one are you talking about?
No, August 2nd and August 4th.
The evenings, I could be all right on August 2nd, not August 4th.
How about August 2nd and 3rd?
Possibly. I'm trying to wrap up my grades and get out of town on the 5th, that's, you know. I hate to tell you that, I don't know.
Well, if we're talking evenings, what about August 1st and 2nd? 1st and 2nd?
I can't do that. That goes into that last week of July, and I can't do that. What about the 15th and 16th?
15th was available.
Can you talk to the evenings?
Yep.
It's Dr. Johnson.
Dr. Jones is going to be gone 16, 17, and 18, and 19.
Aren't that one word?
Sir, I'm out that whole week.
Why don't we look at September?
If we're going to look at September, I think, as Ms. Harris said, we might as well wait a little bit. Because my schedule may start filling up, I'd say.
So, we can wait. Things should calm down, I think, after the end of the summer, hopefully. I mean, all people, most of us will be going on vacation then, so.
If you want to do this next year, then we need to put a date down.
I agree, too, early.
Early, so you've got to work around.
I agree.
Because people make plans, and, yeah, I agree.
Not that even work, that might be, but yeah, it's a good one.
Well, maybe we could do Tuesdays in September that, the opposite of our meeting nights. Oh, well, then we start doing with open houses too, so.
That's right. Other than that, I have nothing for the next steps. Board comments, talk around?
Just hope everybody has a wonderful summer. And Mr. Johnson, thank you for answering all of my questions this evening. You were very patient, I appreciate it.
Ms. Harris?
The same thing. Thank you for filling in, you did a great job. And just hoping that everyone has a very nice and safe summer.
Mr. Chairman, $17,000 for some of the chair.
If I say I'll pass. Let it go into the capital reserve fund.
Ms. Evil?
I had a conversation today with the person from NASA that does a lot of the STEM education and that has teaches, teachers, and schools. And anyway, it was a good conversation, and we exchanged business cards, and I'm hoping that they can help us with what our goals. So, I just wanted to share that.
Mr. Cole? Okay, I will ask that any other board members that want to add to Mr. Walters' list, just email me. I probably have some of my money at myself.
I think I do, too.
So, I'll email everybody, copy that document.
And unless, yeah, let's do it that way. I'll just make that the running, running list of discussion items.
When is that workshop supposed to take place? Did we know, Ms. Walton?
Wasn't it the 2nd September, or 2nd date of September?
It will be September 27th.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Mr. John, do you have any comments? You're not on the agenda, but I'll-
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your adjourn.